All right, we're back in open session. Thank you, everybody, for your patience. As a result of the executive session, there was no action taken, so. Next item on our agenda is discussion items Surf Soccer League. Receive a presentation from Surf Soccer League, Mr. C. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to welcome Alfredo Reyes. I believe he's here somewhere in the crowd. There he is. Come on up to the microphone, Alfredo. Just a fact about him, he's a councilman in Granger, so welcome, our neighbor. He's here to talk about the Surf Soccer League and I met with him about a month ago, I think. Time flies and he's really active in the community, has a passion for soccer and for youth, so he's going to present a PowerPoint on the possibilities of the Surf Soccer League partnering with City of Sunnyside to put on a youth soccer league when it gets a little bit warmer, so I'll turn the floor to him, Mayor.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you. First and foremost, you know, thank you for having me here and giving me the opportunity to present. As Mike mentioned here, I am a city council member in the city of Granger. I have a huge passion for soccer, you know, I grew up playing it. Fun fact, I would come here in the summers and play here in the other leagues that they got going on here and you know, for unforeseen scenes, family situations, you know, I wasn't able to go on and and play college, but I did get an offer to go play. I could have played at Spokane Falls, but you know, family obligations and etc., you know, I wasn't able to go. But you know, I have a huge passion for soccer. I now coach the Granger JV boys for high school and middle school boys for the Granger Middle School, so pretty much been around soccer. I love it and you know. So yeah, a little bit. I met with Mike and so I had this vision, right, of bringing a structured program to the valley, being accessible to, not only to the city of Granger, but to neighbor neighbor cities such as you know, Proster, Grandview, Sunnyside, all these other areas. And you know, I always thought to myself, you know, why do we always have to go out either, you know, forty-five minutes out of Yakima or forty-five minutes up to Tri-Cities to, you know, play competitive soccer, right? Get that structure, good quality training and soccer and you know, my vision was to bring up a formal structured club here that can lead, you know, pathways to really showcase the skill, the talent that we have here in the valley and you know, I reached out to a lot of local academies, clubs around here in the valley and unfortunately, some of them said that they had their program well structured and they had no intentions of merging or partnering with anyone. And so it came across, you know, one of my brother, he plays academy and and I seen this, this club, it was called the Washington East Surf. And I was like, where's Surf coming from, right? Because we don't have beaches here where, where you know, people surf, right? So I was like, that kind of, you know, I kind of started, you know, doing my research and digging further into this club. And I came to realize, you know, they're a big nonprofit organization. They originated from San Diego, nineteen seventy-seven. That's where headquarters is at. Throughout the years, they expanded. They are now fifty-five clubs strong around the nation, United States, and they're still growing to this point. And so they're just a very well organization that really strives to provide the best player development to other players in their, in their organization. And so that's, you see here, that's what WE Surf stands for, is Washington East Surf Soccer Club. They are based out of Spokane and I did get a partnership through them. So just a little bit, you know, why Surf, you know, I just mentioned it, they prioritize the development growth of the players. You know, they, they, they run differently, right? They have operations for every how should I say, you know, they just have like an admin that deals with everything that's going behind, right? The COY, the certification of insurance, the making sure that players, coaches are up to date with, you know, background checks, coaching education, because that's something that we also prioritizes, that our coaches have to go through some certifications to be able to coach and be able to deliver high efficiency training to the kids that are doing the program within our club. So there's the executive staff, you know, you got the sporting director, the chief development officer who, you know, I worked really closely into being, bringing that merge down here. And then you have, you know, the chief operations and financial officer who oversees the the whole, you know, administration part of the club. And then you have Chad Brown, who's a technical director, who is also currently the head coach of Spokane Falls. He's the one who oversees and implements, making sure that we offer and stay up to date with the high quality training sessions that we can offer, or if we ever run out of ideas, you know, we go to him and he sets up with some some unique session plans to be able to carry out and, and deliver a great practice session, for sure. And then so, you know, that just kind of gives you the whole, you know, background of the history, how it started, right? Three clubs in Spokane merged to form Surf because Surf wasn't in Washington. Surf was brought by three clubs from Spokane. And then as you see in twenty twenty-four, they expanded here to Central Washington, which was established River Valley, which is us, this community, the Lower Park community, right? So you know, there are also, so that's something to take in consideration, that there's two Surf's, right? You have the Western Surf and then you have Eastern Surf. We're still one organization, but different completely organizations, everyone runs a little bit different. But we are under the same national brand of Surf, which is San Diego. So it's a big organization itself. So the benefits of the players, right, it's the development, the growth, the training, right, we prioritize, you know, like I mentioned, high quality training. You know, there's international playing opportunities through Surf Select Program. Means that, you know, when a kid is in our program, they could, you know, depending on age group, right, like let's just put this example, right, two thousand and tens. Let's say a really kid really stands out with their program, what happens next is that they get nominated for Surf Select. They go to Spokane for a one-day trial. You have coaches who are obviously, you know, evaluating if the player, you know, really proves themselves, there's an A and a B team, if you put it that way. You know, with the A teams being able to go internationally to play, you know, Spain academies. And the B teams would play tournaments here, domestic, right, within the United States with high top teams with, you know, next MLS, next academies or, or etc., right? You're still playing at the high, so you're basically showing, showcasing your skills at an international level or at a, at a high level here within the United States. And then so we do, the benefits that the players get through our program, right, it's a college preparatory program. We have, you know, advisors that, you know, a lot of kids dream about going to play D1, D2, D3. We have those opportunities through us. Or if they, like, you know, we just said, international opportunities, pro pathways, whatever, you name it, we, we have all those networking connections. In addition to that, we also do camps and clinics. We do a lot of free camps and clinics, you know, just this past weekend, Saturday, we had a girl's open session. It was free. We don't, you know, that's what we do. We try to, you know, provide good quality training, at least get back to the communities here and there by doing free open sessions. And then we also do a lot of academy trainings. We did it, you know, in the fall, we did it in the winter and we're hoping to do another one in the, in the summer, right? We do a lot of footsoff training. So what we do is we focus a lot on, on the training, training part and also offering some playing opportunities as well, for sure. And then so like I mentioned briefly in the beginning, you know, we're fifty-five clubs strong and still growing. There's developmental programs for coaches and it's just, you know, it's just really well programmed for coaches as well. We can continue our education and yeah, so. If we go on to the Knicks, which is the current leagues or yeah, so if we go to current leagues, you know, we play in about ten different, you know, leagues, you know, we got a first man team, we got a women's first team, and then we have Elite Academy. Girls Academy, you know, with respect to each player's skill level, they get placed. And then we have, you know, developmental programs for younger kids that are wanting excel to those, into those leagues. And then we do offer a rec, a junior's rec program, which wasn't there. And you know, if you scroll down, you know, we're excited to be part of this journey. Some of our uniform kicks here are, you know, as pictured here, you know, you have your home, your weight and your training kit, so we are official, we are through Nike. And our goalkeepers, and then those are some swag. If you scroll down, those are some swag that, you know, players can purchase, you know, on their own, just to kind of rep the, the organization itself. And like I mentioned, you know, we are a nonprofit organization and it was just pretty much, you know, it took me about a year to negotiate and, you know, bring these guys down here and just to get an expansion. And that was my vision, was to bring a structured program that we can provide for the kids in our community. Now, you might say, you know, a lot of, I mean, I'm pretty sure everybody knows, right? You have Sozo's Clubs, you have Three Rivers, you have CWS, right? But see, my goal and my vision was to bring something here that's close to the, to the families because, you know, as you know, we're in agricultural sector, right? And so a lot of these parents can sacrifice an hour of work to take their kids, you know, to go practice, I don't know, maybe an hour, two hours, and then come back and be up early the next day and be able to go and do it, you know, three times a week, right? And so I said, why not bring it here close to us, right? Not, why not bring a good structure, a good training program to our kids in the valley, right, without having? Now, you might have families that can, right, and, and power to them, but you might have those kids that really desire, right? Because I mean, you see it over in the school, right? You have kids, whether if they come, we see it in Granger, for example, let's put it in Granger, right? We have kids that play CWS, right? You have kids that play Three Rivers, Sozo's. And they rock their swag, right? And a lot of these kids that wish and want to be part of it, they, they can't because again, parents, some parents can't afford to take an hour away from their, from their job, especially in seasonal work, to take their kids here. And I was like, well, why not bring it here close, right? And so we do work a lot with, you know, businesses, you know, sponsorships, opportunities. We have the W9s, you know, the, formed W9 to be able to tax write-off for any business that would like to contribute to us and, you know, make this program available to, to the, to the kids. And that was my vision, was to bring something more formal here for the communities. I'm in no shape, I mean, in no way looking to compete with any, any program, you know, hey, you guys want to be part of us, great. If you don't, then also, right, there's no hard feelings, but you know, at least there's an option for the kids that would want to be part of an organization to feel part of a club, right? And yeah, I mean, I hope I nailed it. So I mean, it's different, it's, it's, it's different, you know, giving a, a speech than sitting there, because that's, that's how I am over there at city council, right? You know, I'm, I'm on the, on the chair rather than giving a talk, but, but that's all, I mean, that's, that's a little bit about us and I don't know how this works. I mean, I'm more than happy to answer questions if if there's questions.
Well, yes, I'll definitely give council an opportunity to ask some questions and make some comments on this as well. So Ms. Hart, you go ahead and go first.
Yes, I understand that the Surf program in Granger started just this last year, was it not?
Yeah, in fall, in fall, yeah.
And how many, how many teams are you currently in, in this particular league here in the Lower Valley?
Yeah, so it works a little bit different. So we run, like I mentioned, you know, we run fall academies where we bring different age, there's no teams there. I'm talking about the training, this is, you know, we open up to basically three years olds to high school, there's no team training. We focus on the development of the player, right? We do trainings, we'll, we'll then, you know, have them scrimmage against each other, but there's no teams there. Sort of like, you know, our juniors recs program, right? We'll have trainings and then they'll play. Now, for the competitive side, we have not had any official tryouts, because that's different, that's a different route, right? So we, as of right now, we can probably say we have two teams or three teams that we've took into turn up, but they're not fully committed yet.
Okay, so basically, the Surf program is, is just to build up the players, find the players, whether they're little kids. I think I saw something on Facebook this past weekend where they were doing a bunch of running around. At one of the gyms, I'm not sure which gym it was at, there were a bunch of small children, toddler, little.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. So yeah, that's, that's our winter footsoff program, so they'll do the training about an hour and then we'll give them half an hour to play, but incorporate what they've learned during that training session.
I don't know, this is just an aside, but they always like, look like a bunch of puppies out there just racing around, but I'm somewhat familiar with this particular program. My grandson-in-law is one of the directors, I think, Miguel Lugo.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. He's our technical director, yeah.
Yeah, so he's, he keeps me informed of what's going on with this little Surf program.
Yeah.
I'm really excited about this one.
Yeah, and so yeah, that's a great point you pointed out there, yeah, because we focus a lot on the training part, the developmental part, right? We, we do like to incorporate the, the, the playing part, but we basically prepare them so when they're ready to compete, then they'll be placed on our, on our competing teams to go out and represent and, and showcase their skills, for sure.
Thank you.
Councilor Vasquez.
Yeah, my question is, I did hear it's a nonprofit organization, but is there a cost for the players to be a part of this? And if so, how much more or less? And if so, is that money poured back into the children or the participants?
Yeah, sure. So there is a cost, right? Even Sozo's, if you see they're a nonprofit, they have a cost to run, right? There is a cost on the competitive side. On the recs, if we get sponsorships, we can offer free programs, right? Because it costs, right, to run. We, we like to fund our, you know, for the balls, the equipment, you know, training equipment, it's not, we don't, we don't really, we have to get the funds somewhere, right? But when there's a sponsor that comes in, that helps alleviate the costs, right? And right now, what helps us is that I'm working closely with the school of Granger and we're not getting, you know, any fees for, for the field usage. And, and City of Grandview as well, we've gone out there and we've done free camps and free clinics and we're, we're just trying to, you know, really make this accessible for kids. And there is scholarships, opportunities for the competitive side, competitive side. So there's scholarships, opportunities, and there is also sponsorships, like, let's say, hey, you know, a kid really wants to play and there's a sponsor that can sponsor that kid, that also counts as well. So we, we offer scholarships as well, yeah.
Great, that's good to know.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Mr. Deputy Mayor.
What, what's, what's the ask? Is, is, are you looking to team up with the city or are you looking for facilities or?
Sure, that's a great question, yeah. So I mean, ideally, right, we would, we would want to, you know, see if we can use some fields here. Some in the winter, right, keep the program going, some, you know, the community center, we rented out, I think, two months ago and we used it for training, specifically training. We don't run no, no, no leagues, just so our, our players, our, our people that, you know, our kids that are in our program, they don't lose those touches on the ball, right? Because if you compare teams from, you know, believe it or not, it's going to get to the point where, you know, a lot of kids are going to want to come out and there's talent here, we have the talent here, right? And then some teams will travel, right? And one of our disadvantages is that we get, we get snow and, and, and winter here, right? Where you go to San Diego, it's really nice out there. In Texas, you get this nice hot weather, so their teams are training out there, you know, twenty-four seven. They basically eat, breathe and, and live soccer, right? We have to really navigate and see, because we don't, none of our communities has like a big, you know, complex like Yakima does, like Sozo's and stuff. So we rely on really using the facilities of, of the schools and, and the communities to be able to carry on training. Let me, let me clarify that, training, not, no running leagues or, you know, it's just more of training. And that's, it's different than, you know, what you, you see, right, playing, playing a league, so.
Okay, other questions?
At least for indoor, sorry, let me clarify that.
Understood. Ms. Trauostar.
So just to follow up on that, on Deputy Mayor's question, are you asking for the facilities to be offered for free? Or are, or has there been any negotiations with, with the city manager?
No, no negotiations. I just kind of want to see if that was an option to see if we could, you know, use them potentially for free, you know, that'll alleviate some costs as well, for sure. You know, I, I know there's got to be some way you guys got to navigate or find the loophole, the loop to it, because I know it might interfere with public funds or, or, I can't, I can't, sorry, I'm so nervous, but you know, you know what I'm trying to say, but but yeah, I mean, ideally, it would be awesome if we can use them, access them, you know, and then that would kind of help, you know, reduce the, the cost, for sure.
Yes, okay. Yeah, manager's got a question here. We're going to give him a shot first.
Councilman, thanks for coming. And when we talked in my office, you had talked about the partnership in Granger with the city and then also the school district. And that is, they, they essentially donate the fields and, and the infrastructure for that.
Yeah, yeah.
So that, so that is given to you free, so I want, I wanted to get that, that part out there. And then also, in terms of the league, we, we talked about the, the infrastructure and the ability for Surf to sign up kids. Because, you know, the, the challenge for the city is we don't really have the, the ability to do that, so you, you, Surf could handle that and then, and then, and then we also talked about the cost and and sort of the offsetting with, with sponsorships and, and those kind of things. Do you, do you have, and we also talked about the age of the kid, the age range from like six all the way up to maybe ten or twelve.
Right.
Do you have an idea of what you think the price point would be? Because, you know, that's important to our community. You know, if it's a hundred and fifty bucks per kid, that, you know, that's probably out of most people's reach.
Yeah, so, yeah, definitely. So, for example, like, let's say we run a oh, shoot, let's say we run a rec program, right? We do, I don't know, a nine-week program. What we do is, we basically, you know, if there's no charge with, with field usage, right? We do about eighteen sessions for ninety-five and it includes two, two training shirts. So it's like, you know, basically like nine bucks, five bucks a session, and it's like about an hour and a half, so.
And these are games too, though. I, I want to make sure that.
Yeah, yeah.
And Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask Ben a question, like in terms of the donation, because everybody, you know, you always hear this gifting of public funds. Clearly, Granger's allowing the use of the fields. I mean, use of a field is not gifting of money, is it?
No, it's not. If it's for a public benefit, then you can go ahead.
Right, because it's for the, I mean, that, that was the purview. I was looking and, you know, I'd lean on, on Debbie and Cus Artyaga and welcome Cus, he's going to be our interest interim public works director. I mean, in your guys' career in Toppenish and Grandview, have you donated fields over your careers, you know, and for kids? Because clearly, it's a public benefit for kids, right? Ben, is, that's the issue?
Yes, and that's the idea, is that there's a public use, but it's also a public benefit.
Yeah, okay.
We didn't want to destruction, we ran, we set up for parks. So the rec league would be established to be recreation.
Okay, gotcha.
And when I was in Toppenish, we did have some outside organizations that came in and put on soccer clinics, but they just, they used the park, because parks are free to use for.
Right, so the use of the park seems like it would be within that bailiwick. And that's, that's one thing I wanted to get out there for the public, because it often gets conflated, like, you're letting them use something for free, while it's a, I mean, it's a, something people get to use free anyway.
And so, yeah, Mike, so going back, I kind of missed it, yeah. So we do all the registration, right? It's kind of like when you're signing up to school sports, right? It's a concussion forum, there's, everything gets collected, basically.
Right.
Sort of like if you're signing up your kid for a school sport, it works exactly the same. And we have the COY, we can provide that, we can provide the nonprofit, you know. I can provide any document you guys would, would like to.
Yeah, and, and I know cost is going to be a concern. I just got a text, Surf is expensive. You know, that's how closely people pay attention and, and Sunnyside, so, so you're saying it would cost around ninety-five dollars?
Yeah, yeah, for the rec part, for the.
Gotcha.
Now, the competitive side, you know, it's going to be.
The competitive side is a little bit more expensive, okay, gotcha.
Ms. Hart, you had a question?
I think, I think you may have addressed it in, in respect to sponsorships. So the students who are the players, excuse me, the players who are participating, they can get sponsorships to, to help them play, to get the, the fees to, to be in the clinics and to be in the trainings. Is that something that Surf is doing?
Yeah, so for example, like, let's say, hey, you know, we want to start off with, you know, let's say, you know, the rec program here, right, and there's a business that wants to help out. They can get in contact with me, we can, you know, see what, what, you know, equipment is needed, etc., and then we'll go from there. But yeah, and then on the competitive side, yes, there's, there is sponsorship opportunities to help a kid reach their goal to go compete at a, at a high level, of course.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Further questions? I want to thank you, sir, for your presentation. I know that with our city's very tight budget, we've had to eliminate some positions and we don't have like a Parks and Rec Director. Yet at the same time, our kids are valuable to us and we want to make sure that they've got good structured activities, things that will distract them from the negative influences in life. And this seems like something that definitely merits more conversation and try to make things work out. Obviously, there's, I mean, it's not something that you can say, hey, we're going to do it exactly a certain way, you haven't got to that point yet. But I certainly appreciate the presentation. I think it's very helpful. And so, yeah, I, I look forward to continued conversation and perhaps being able to make this all work here.
Of course, yeah, thank you.
And thank you for your time for coming here this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
All right, next item, item B, Amendment to Sunnyside Municipal Code 2.08 Study Sessions. Review the proposed ordinance amending section 2.08 of the Sunnyside Municipal Code, consolidating study sessions to once per month. Mr. City Manager.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So city council directed city staff to draft the amendment to Sunnyside Municipal Code 2.08. Seeking to adjust the scheduling of the city council study sessions. Currently, study sessions are held twice a month on the first and third Mondays of every month at 6:00 PM. The proposed change would reduce the study sessions to once a month, scheduling the first Monday of each month at 6:00 PM. There are no proposed changes to the regular city council meetings and will continue as scheduled. If council approves the proposed ordinance, we will add this item to the consent agenda on March tenth, twenty twenty-five for consideration, so. To give a little context, we're a small staff and, and we were going four meetings a month, which is pretty heavy for a small staff. You realize I was a little spoiled coming from the city of Pasco and then as the Franklin County Administrator had, had a bit more staff, so I commend our staff. I really push them and, you know, push them to the limit, but I'm sensing this would help us kind of do some more of the yeoman's work in between that time and I think it would give council a bit of a breather to, to read some of the packets and things. So I appreciate the staff, I pushed them to the limits and, and they did a great job, but again, I think this would give us all a little breathing room and, you know, not having that one meeting per month, but still having three. And, you know, and we looked at all the different equations, just in case anybody from the public is, is hearing this for the first time. We debated two times a month with a study session and, and then a regular meeting after that, but that seemed really condensed and then so it made the most sense to have one larger study session than, than go into two regular meetings, so that's what's on the floor, Mayor.
All right, council, questions or comments? Mr. Deputy Mayor.
So Mike, it's not necessarily going to give us more time to look at the packet as Ms. Sable stated last.
Yeah, that's true, yeah.
So it could, we still sometimes have to see the packet until late Friday or Saturday, which I mean, to me, it doesn't matter. I look at it Saturday morning and, and, and do my notes, but I mean, I, I like this, it's, that's the way we were doing it, when we changed it to four meetings, you know, I, I thought, I thought it was a little bit more. I was just going with it, see, you know, see how it goes, but I'm okay with having an S's.
Yeah, and you, and you're right, I kind of misspoke there. I would say more in the sense of like digest the information, because we, we have a lot of information coming at us all the time. And that's something, we're working to get the packets to you guys a little bit earlier. That's always a work in progress, so definitely taking note of that, but I think in general, like more of a sense to, to digest, get a breather on that, that extra Monday that we don't have one and then, you know, hopefully, in a sense, maybe get ahead of the game for the packets, so you can get one of them earlier, because I, I will say Jackie does an amazing job of always, you know, us feeding her the information and she's a wizard getting it uploaded and so in that sense, I think it'll help all of us.
Okay, other questions or comments?
No questions. I think it was pretty clear the last time we kind of spoke about this, for me.
Okay. I, uh, obviously was not present for the last several meetings, but I'm kind of chuckling as I was going through this, because you know, it's basically going back to the way that we'd always done it before and it kind of comes back to, maybe there was a reason we did it that way before. I see two former council members sitting in the audience this evening and, and both of you can remember when we'd have our, our workshop slash study session and then we'd have our two regular meetings. And then we went back to, then we switched it up to having our study session before the regular meeting and that really put the pressure on us to try to get through all the material. And then with the study session every other week, that makes it really busy, that's hard on staff. You know, we ask a lot of our staff and they almost always deliver. I am just always impressed with what they're able to get done. And yet, it's, it's a lot of extra work. And I think that if we are diligent and responsible in the work that we do as council members, I think we should be able to do this with the with the study session and then two regular meetings, I think that's, and, and we'll give staff a bit of a breather here. Other comments or questions on this one?
No, I, I mean, I'd just like to add that initially, when we, when we switched to four, I, I think we, we found ourselves having to do a lot of cleanup. So we found ourselves in a nearly four million dollar deficit. So I think coming together a lot more than usual made sense, so let's not forget about the reason why we had switched it up. So let's not forget about the reason why we had switched it up initially and what the reasoning behind us putting more workload on, on our plate. And so I think maybe now when things have maybe not minimized, but we, we've grappled some things a little bit more. Maybe it makes sense to go down to three, so just not wanting to forget why we, why we went to four initially.
All right, so I think we've got a bit of a direction from council. We'll put that on the consent agenda for our next regular meeting on Monday and vote that up or down. Item C, Police Department update. Receive an update from the Police Department related to statistics. I think we just toss it right to the chief. I think it's all yours.
All right, so I apologize. I, I wanted to put a lot more into this, but due to recent crimes, I didn't want to pull our crime analyst off some of the work she's been doing, especially related to the latest homicide. But I just wanted to go through the stats. This is the stuff that I'm sending in the weekly report. But this is year to date, so this is only going to compare the first of the year to February twenty-seventh, which is right at the end of last week for the previous year. So it's not going to include stuff that happened later in the year. And then the percent change is going to be from twenty-four to twenty-five. It's not going to include the previous stuff. However, I'll point out some earlier years as, as we go along here. So aggravated assaults, assaults are down forty percent from last year. But they're pretty much in average as you look across. Twenty-three was a high year, but they're pretty much on average there. Burglaries breaking and entering is down seventy-one percent. And honestly, I couldn't tell you what I attribute that to. But from last year to this year, down seventy-one percent. If you look back at twenty twenty-one, we were at a high of twenty-seven. Motor vehicle thefts are down eighty-four percent from last year with a high of thirty-nine in twenty twenty-one. And that's going to be, that can have a couple of factors. One could be the weather. People aren't warming up their cars if it's not as cold in the morning. And two, you can see about when we got the flock cameras in about twenty twenty-three. And so that made a big difference going forward. People know that we're watching for their cars and they're going to hit on a flock system somewhere in the county or Tri-Cities even. So the flock system, we have, we get alerts. If we put a vehicle in flock, we can get an alert if they hit in New Jersey, as long as that jurisdiction has a flock system. So we are tied in all across the country on the flock system. Murder negligent homicides, so again, this is year to date, were up a hundred percent. So two this year, one the previous year. You can see there was two early in twenty twenty-one, one in twenty twenty-two. Robbery down a hundred percent, but that's from two to zero. So that's kind of hard to quantify. A hundred percent looks good, but when you look at the numbers, it's not that, not that big of a jump. Simple assaults are up slightly from last year. However, last year was our lowest year in the five-year that we are pulling the data here. So twenty-two is still our second lowest year. Theft from motor vehicles down seventy-five percent. And we can talk about why that is here in just a second. Theft of motor vehicle parts or accessories, that's, we haven't had any there. Weapons law violations are up eighty-three percent. And I attribute the theft from a motor vehicle and the weapons law violations to the Street Crimes Unit getting back in action. So weapons law violation could be as simple as pulling a car over for a DUI and then they see a weapon in there, they do a search warrant, recover the weapon, that would flag as a weapons violation call. So patrol may not have the time to dig that deep into a, a car that they stop or something like that, where Street Crimes does, and that's their specialty. That's what they're out looking for. That's what we expect them to do. That's what I attribute that rise there. So I can answer any questions anybody might have.
Council, questions or comments for the chief? Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Great results, right, except for the simple assault. Do we know why it's still kind of trending up? Is it repeat offenders? Are we catching and releasing or?
Well, the simple assault is, is the second highest or the second lowest year we've had, if you look across the five. So eighteen, twenty-two, and then it's twenty-four, thirty, twenty-seven, twenty-seven. So we're still on the low end. It's, it's four more than the previous year. Four to me, it's, it's, it's hard to, hard to tell. I don't think that. I think in municipal court, we're doing a fine job. I think sometimes at the Superior Court level, because of case limits, we're having a hard time getting some stuff prosecuted up there, but that shouldn't handle, that shouldn't affect the simple assaults. That would be up more in your aggravated assaults. So.
Okay.
Other questions or comments? So Chief, we've seen some of these numbers are down. I mean, how much do you attribute to that to the money that was spent on, on flock cameras and other preventative materials? I mean, is that helpful in any way or is it?
Well, I can tell you that I think that motor vehicle theft is directly affected by the flock cameras. Now, we might not stop some of these crimes and they may still show up as a stat, but apprehensions are probably up. Well, I can tell you they are up because of the flock cameras. We used flock cameras today in a high theft from Walmart. They got a portion of the plate and then they started looking for that plate and said it just went west on whatever. And then we caught the people. So the flock cameras are used on a daily basis. Our, when we got the flock cameras put in, Jafet and his staff, our dispatchers have, each of them have like three computer screens. What we did was we put one up high like these that does nothing but monitor flock. So our dispatchers, because if you have a plate that hits and the plate is C E L L for, I'm just looking at the cell phone sign there. And it might be a C F L L, but the bottom of a license plate frame might cut off the bottom half of that. It's going to take somebody to have to look, make sure, look at the hit and determine if that's an actual hit or not. And so dispatch can do that for us almost instantaneously. When, when a flock hit gets reported, probably within ten seconds, I get a text and an email. And our patrol officers do that on their work phones as well. So they're getting notified immediately. If they have their flock system up in their car, it will ding and come to the front of their screen. So they're getting the notice right away. And that includes a couple of different pictures of the vehicle, usually a zoom in of the plate, kind of a zoomed out picture of the vehicle and then a copy of the hit, whether they're wanted for whatever. They're wanted in questioning for whatever and they'll put the case number. So if the sheriff's office is looking for a, a car. Okay, so Toppenish, not that long ago, had, had a gentleman that was arrested and escaped somehow. I'm not really sure. But he had a couple of warrants and he had escaped custody. He hit on a flock camera. Our units went to the area, found him, got in a pursuit with him, back to Toppenish, and he was arrested in Toppenish. But the flock is what notified us because it was a Toppenish report entered into flock. And then our system went off and we were able to go, yep, that's the vehicle, get some guys over there. He just, and the other nice thing is, is with the amount of flock cameras that we have, is if a vehicle hits at first and Lincoln, and then next thing you know, it hits at sixth and Lincoln, and then it hits at sixteenth and Lincoln. You're okay, well, it's driving westbound on Lincoln. And so it hasn't turned off yet or whatever. So the multiple flock cameras really helps, because if we can't, takes us a few minutes to get there, we can continue to see where the vehicle is headed, so.
Well, I know I had the opportunity to ride along with a police officer a few weeks ago, and I was absolutely impressed with the wealth of information they had at their fingertips, whether on their phone or on a laptop in their car or in whatever. They had so much information on anybody that they needed to stop, whether it was a traffic ticket, whether it was a pursuit, whether they saw a quick license plate and whipped it around and said, okay, this is a problem. So I'm impressed with how well the technology has been working. I know we've also had some successes with other cities that we picked up some fugitives from Pasco or from other cities. And so that's, that's been good. But yet, there's, you know, there's always concern with the expense and the ongoing subscriptions and that sort of stuff. And so we want to make sure that, that we all feel that it's worthwhile. It's worth the investment.
If, if you've heard the governor speak recently, Washington State is the lowest per capita for law enforcement in the nation, with the lowest number of officers per population in the country. And he's dedic, he's trying to get, he says he won't pass a budget unless there's a hundred thousand, I think a hundred million dollars or a hundred thousand dollars dedicated to, to funding officers. But this helps us multiply our force when we have forty cameras out there. So it, it helps, definitely.
Okay, further questions or comments for the chief? All right, thank you, Chief. Finance Department update. Receive an update from the Finance Department. Ms. Sable.
Well, thank you, Mayor and Council, and I would like to also just comment on Councilmember Falstow's comment about going to four meetings, because we, council did have a lot of stuff going on at the end of the, of twenty twenty-four. So it kind of ties into the items that I'm going to go over. I wanted to provide council with an update on the Finance Department activity since October twenty twenty-four, which include the status of our fiscal year twenty twenty-four year end, the finalization of our twenty twenty-five budget, which is basically posting our beginning fund balances that are the actual, not what we projected. The organization progress in the terms of the budget management and a scan of some current major items and those that are on the near term that will be impacting the Finance Department. So since the end of twenty twenty-four, the Finance Department has focused on the most urgent priorities. And one of those, City Manager had hired a consultant to come in and do some financial analysis and provided council with an update on that. And so that was, you know, when I came on, part of was familiarizing myself with the financial status of where the city was at in its major funds, communicating the state of the city's finances with the city's leadership team, the city council and the public. We developed and implemented with council major amendments to the twenty twenty-four budget reflecting economic conditions that were impacting the city. And that was, some of, they were very hard decisions that council had to make. We, you know, we had to redo the ARPA distributions. There were some transfers that we had to not make and some big purchases that were planned that we had to just put a halt to. City Manager had to just say, no more spending. We did the development of the twenty twenty-five budget. We have initiated an analysis of our fiscal health and rates on water, sewer, garbage utilities, the EMS rate analysis, jail rates and cost allocation plan with our consultant FCS Group. During that time, we also put a halt to the conversion from the Springbrook Express, which is what we currently have, where we were going to be moving to the enterprise system, which would have changed the form of accounting that we would have had been doing. Worked with the police and the public works director to evaluate and reconfigure the city's position on our vehicle leases. I don't think anyone had any idea of how big the lease program that we have is, and we've worked to send a couple of vehicles back that we don't need and we're working on how we can rotate some of those vehicles out sooner and get back to having some of our own vehicles. We've done finance staff, staff training and support. Been working with the city's management team on budget issues and constraints. We've had one-on-one trainings, discussions regarding their budgets. You know, as we know, they did not have access to their budgets for quite a while and were kind of left in the dark as to where they were. Worked on the state auditor's office to complete the twenty twenty-three federal single audit and then worked with the auditor's office to postpone the accountability audit until, until the spring. So we will be doing that coming up in twenty twenty-five. Have gone through and, and organized our grants and realized that we do have a, a number of more grants than we actually thought that we did. Found some reimbursements that we didn't know that we had. And then have been doing some support with the labor attorney and costing for the ongoing labor negotiations. So twenty twenty-four budget, the thing that has been the kind of the cross. We are in the process of finalizing our reconciliation for twenty twenty-four. So we do have September through December reconciled. We still need to work on June through August, and those are going to be the three hard months, because that's where we were processing our accounts payable and our cash proceeding in the enterprise system. And then we migrated that back into bias. And so not, not everything hit exactly where it needed to hit. So that's going to take a little bit longer in getting that figured out. And then we have found some discrepancies between January and May, which we thought that they had already been reconciled. And while we've been doing that, we've just, you know, we found numerous rogue deposits, found a grant reimbursement for one of Derek's groups, one of his grants that he has going on that we didn't know that we had. We're completing the interfund transfers. We have the utility tax complete. We just need to work on the equipment rental transfers and then those for our debt service, which we do transfer from either the water fund to the water debt service fund and, and sewer. And then we do still need to get a ruling from the auditor's office on how the investments had been administered. And so those have been sent to the auditor's office, not that there's any investments missing, it's just how they have been coded, as in one fund bought them, but maybe when they matured, they got coded, they got sent to another fund. So we're just trying to get that figured out. For the twenty twenty-five budget, as, as presented to council and based on the GMP report, you know, we had a number of years where we just had, you know, a lot of ARPA money, we had a lot of spending. Expenditures were outpacing revenues more than could be sustained. So the budget, the twenty twenty-five budget was based on using twenty twenty-one revenues and expenditures and then doing a modest increase in revenues and expenditures for that. Once we get the ending fund balances done for twenty twenty-four, that, that will really help us to determine do we have more money in this particular fund or do we actually have less money? So that's going to help us to kind of plan out the rest of the year a little bit further. Let's see here. Let's see, we have talked about the reconciling, getting those fund balances. And then working with the finance committee to with the swimming pool. That was, that was a big, that was a hard decision for council and that was finance committee did a good job on coming together and figuring out how the pool could end up being opened. Let's see, we're looking at our first budget amendment, which would include the revenues and expenditures for the pool and of course, getting those final ending fund balances. We have eleven items already to add to that budget amendment. For the budget administration, I, I am happy and excited to report that the department directors, they're utilizing Springbrook Express. We did a, a two-hour training with the department directors and have created some templates for some of the department directors, so they can go in and look at their budgets and run reports. We did do a full day training. The city manager authorized that and I T helped in getting that set up. And this was the first formal training that anyone in, in the city working here has, has ever had. They've always just been trained by another person that worked here before. Let's see what else. We do have, we continued ongoing training. The annual report is right, it's right there. It's due May thirty-first. So one of the first things as soon as we get the twenty twenty-four ending fund balance, that reconciled, we can start working on that. Again, we're going to have accountability audit, which will be for fiscal years twenty twenty-two, twenty-three and twenty-four. That will be sometime in the spring. We haven't received a confirmation from the auditors on that yet. We do need to still finalize our rate and our cost allocation analysis, which, again, that would have to also be sent to the auditor's office for review and approval and then brought back to council for adoption. We've been working on improving our chart of accounts, which is basically our bars numbers. And so we, we've, we've kind of used like a condensed version of bars where we've coded a lot of different items to one number. And we're trying to, you know, enhance that where we can start tracking things a little bit better versus lump summing everything just in one place. And one of them in particular is our, our software subscriptions, which is a new item that is required to be in our annual report, like our leases. They want to know what are all your obligations to your software subscriptions that you have? How much do they cost you and what is the long-term outlook for all of those subscriptions? We do need to still set up our segregation for the swimming pool revenues and the expenditures. Folks on their next utility bill will be getting the utility tax on the utility bill will show thirty-one percent. We were hoping that we could have two separate light items that had a twenty-nine percent and a two percent, but we're not able to do that. The bill does have a note that says that, that thirty-one percent is, you know, twenty-nine percent is for general services and then two percent is for the twenty twenty-five swimming pool season. So that it is listed on the utility bill. But we'll get that segregated so we can provide reports to council on the revenues and the expenditures. City Manager Gonzalez and H R manager formerly Navarro and now Brown have been in the process of recruiting for the finance supervisor and the administrative services director positions. And again, the finance staff that, that we have. that we have are just great. They've all stepped up. They're continuing to take on more work. The city manager has hired a consultant to come in one day a week to help with with finance, our reconciliations and hopefully some of our reports. And and I'm still on track for June 30th to retire. If there, are there any questions?
All right. Questions for Ms. Abel.
And I did include also the, the page from GMP's report, just as a reminder of some of the, what we were looking at and why we've had so many council meetings.
Ms. Riffle.
Can you explain the process of reconciling the budget?
We can't. So we, so we reconcile our cash investments. So we have all of our bank statements and our, our investment statements. And that equals our cash investments, actually what we have. And so when we run a financial report from financials, the cash investments in financials has to balance exactly to our statements. And so that's what we're trying to do. We're trying to say, we're trying to get the financials to balance with our checkbooks and our investment statements.
Okay. You know, we know that we got opioid money. Have you found out yet?
I do not. That is on my, my list of finance to dues is to, we did receive, I know we received some in 2024. I'm not exactly sure what the use of it is yet. I haven't delved in that much to see what all the uses of the opioid money are for. And I do believe there was some that were that came in in 2023. And so those we have to look for and find out what those are. And I would assume those are going to be restricted funds.
Okay. And then there was $10,000 from the Festival of Trees that we haven't found.
That's for the
The dog shelter.
And, and since that was not, it was not set into a separate fund, but just put into the general fund, it's probably been spent the 2024.
Well, I would have a problem with that. So I think that we need to delve and see if we can figure out where that was spent.
Yes. When we, we get through with and reconciling, so if we come back with, you know, we have $157,000 in the general fund fund balance. So we would take that $10,000 and say, $10,000 that belongs in X and we would make that be like a restricted fund balance.
Which it was where it was supposed to have been.
And same with the opioid is, is figuring out where, where that is at in that ending fund balance.
Ms. Frausto.
Question. I was in a meeting earlier today and was reminded of the community donating to the worm, the warming shelter. I think it was the warming shelter back last January, when the previous city manager was still in. And there was a community member that I was talking to saying that her entire family donated cash. And they would, they were dropping it off at the community center. And she actually had the question of where did that money go and do we know how much we actually allocated from the community donations, monetary donations? Do we know? And well, how much we actually got in during that time, how we were, it was way before your time, but I mean, it seemed like to be quite a mess.
Well, I know that there were, the city did open the community center for a warming shelter and there was a specific line items for that, for the staff that was working there and for the purchase of, I think there were some cots and some blankets and some different things. So we can run a report to find out what donations were provided for that. And I'm sure that they were used specifically for that.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah. And just to, I guess, set us straight because I, I think to my understanding, we don't even have a donation policy in place. So during the time when community members were donating money dur- last January, I, I don't, it's seems like we now understand where a lot of the mismanagement of funding, you know, stemmed from. They weren't tracking it correctly, nor did we have a donation policy in place. So I think it's something that we definitely have to consider moving forward.
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Hart, you had a question?
Um, no.
Oh.
I thought, I think, I think I got asked, well, yes, there is one on the opioid money. That was to be used for like a treatment, substance treatment, used for mental health. And a lot of it was going to be focused, I think, towards the police department, was it not?
There's about 10 things you can use the opioid opioid money for. I, I don't think a decision had ever been made. I wasn't aware that it ever came in. We did apply for it as a city. I know that, but I don't, I, I didn't know if it ever came in or not.
Do we know the amount?
I, the number $63,000 means something to me for 2024.
I'm sorry.
$63,000 is what I think came in, in 2024.
$63,000?
Plus whatever would have come in in 23.
23. Okay. But we do need to.
If there was something that came in in 23, that would be in addition to that.
Yes.
Right. So it could be a slightly bigger number there. But if I remember correctly, it what did have to, oh.
Mr. Lynn, go ahead. Come up, sir, Commissioner Lindy and speak into the microphone.
Good evening. I, um, well done, Lindy. I don't have a specific idea of how much, you know, the city would have gotten, but I do know that there is a formula that from all the, from all the pharmaceuticals, the drug makers and manufacturers, we've seen this on a county, on a county level, and there is a list and a formula that we know, for example, that Yakima County and the cities of Yakima, Sunnyside and Grandview are getting a certain amount on a percentage basis from each of the settlements that come out. And what I'm willing to do is reach out to some of the, the staff in our county that actually have access to that formula. We might be able to get some helpful information of the, at least what you're entitled to.
Okay. Would appreciate that. And be in communication with Ms. Abel. That would be awesome.
Careful, careful. That was a good save. So, so that really, I think that answers my question on that because I was, I remember we've talked about it in the past and have I, and I recalled that some of the money was mental health and, and other substance treatments. That seems like that's right.
Right. And I don't remember exactly.
We'll, we can find that out too for this when we get the other information perhaps.
Further questions, comments? Mr. Deputy Mayor.
So thank you, Ms. Abel, for updating your presentation and then providing a little bit more insight. The, the February 27 meeting for, for the, the directors training is, was that the first? You said that was the first training for the directors for, for?
That was the first formal training for staff. That was, we had Springbrook for the, for eight hours.
So they had prior training, informal?
Yeah. Informal has just been, you know, a coworker showed him how to do something. So there was a lot of answers of, oh, this is why we do what we do.
And I know we, I mean, we, we have a lot of new faces here, right? For directors, but how well versed are they now? I mean, I, you know, we have Gus that just started this week and then Mr. Brown last week. But how, how well versed are they in, 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 in looking at their budget and, and going in there and being able to work on, 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 you know, their budget on their own?
They, they actually, the only thing in, in Springbrook that they can do is they can look, they can run reports and they can look at vendors and they can look at things. They actually can't do anything in Springbrook. Only finance staff can do that. I have probably someone who could teach me about budgets next to me. So he, I don't, I'm not worried about him. But the rest of the staff has been, you know, very good at, we've gone through their budgets and we've talked about the different bars numbers and why, why we have things coded a specific way. We've talked about uniforms. We've talked about how we're going to be tracking membership and registrations differently, our software differently, just a broader understanding of just, you know, here, you have $100,000 to spend in your department. It's more of why do you have this money where all it needs to be spent?
So in a perfect world, I guess, when, when we have full staff, what's the normal practices? How, how often do we need to reconcile? I mean, do we do it on a monthly basis, on a quarterly basis?
Be like the last thing that you do is reconcile. I mean, it should be done monthly.
Monthly.
It needs to be done monthly.
And it's not on our, any other policies. I haven't seen anything to, you know, that that states that, correct?
Well, I, I personally don't think it needs to be a policy because you can't do business without reconciling. It's just part of
It's just part of doing business.
Of finance. It's you have to reconcile. It, it produces a treasurer's report. It's a report that, that it, it can go to the city manager to look at. It goes to the council. It says, this is how much money we've spent. This is our revenue. These are our investments. And with, you know, what our outstanding checks are, and without having that balance, we're not able to get those reports out to you. And you can't even start on your annual report until you have your banks balanced.
Which I appreciate, you know, if it wouldn't you doing the job, you know, previous administration obviously, you know, wasn't. Is it something that we, you know, we should have in the policy? So it doesn't happen again?
There's no reason why it can't. I mean, in, in, I, I've never been to a WFO training, WPTA training on finance where it wasn't continually pounded into your head. It's the only thing you ever get done during the month is balance your books. That's then do that. There's nothing more important than reconciling your bank to the financials.
Okay. And one more thing, if I could add, I know we talked about looking at our, our budget policies, right? So I don't know how overworked or overwhelmed, you know, staff is currently, but I, I really would want to revisit those, you know, sooner rather than later.
Yes. And I think what the ones that council put in the, your governance manual are great. Those are great. It's a great start.
It's a good start, but I think, I think definitely needs updating and, and changed around.
All right. Further questions or comments? Ms. Hart.
I do have one. Now, this is, this is a word report. Are you planning when, say, we do this, we do the amendment that we're talking about doing an amendment? Is that going to be like a spreadsheet where you can see the numbers? This is what we spent. This is what we have left. This is, you know what I mean? As far as going across.
Our budget amendment, it'll be, these are the new items.
Because I just want to, yeah, I want to see the numbers
Yep.
per item, line item, department.
Right.
So you will be doing.
Yes. Like with the swimming pool. We did not budget for the swimming pool. We showed that swimming pool expenditures, we have nothing. We budgeted nothing. The amendment is to be to add this.
Add that into, right.
We'll be able to see that for revenues and expenditures.
I just, I just think it's, you know, we have the words, we read the words, but I think sometimes that physical look at the, the numbers is very helpful too. So appreciate all of this, absolutely. But kind of need my visual.
Yeah. No, you definitely do.
Yeah. Thank you.
All right. If there's no further questions or comments, thank you, Ms. Abel, for your report. I know you gave us a lot of information. We can see that we've made a lot of progress from last fall until now, and I wish to commend you and your staff, but also our finance committee here, the council members who have been working so tirelessly on that. You've really dedicated a lot of time and the results are showing. So thank you for your commitment on that as well. We will continue to work on this. Our finances is probably our biggest issue and our biggest responsibility as council members. And to stay on top of that is something that we let slip last year and it was much to our detriment and we don't want that to happen again. So again, thank you everybody for your work. Item E, amending Sunnyside's marijuana prohibition. Receive a presentation regarding amending Sunnyside's marijuana prohibition and provide direction. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. So I want to thank Derek Broughton for putting this presentation together. Also, want to welcome David Morgan. He's the owner of Lucky Leaf in Pasco and also Spokane, Washington. So just a little context why I invited David here when I was Economic Development Manager. At the city of Pasco, I was actually sent by the council to Spokane, Washington to investigate the pros and cons of allowing a marijuana shop in the city of Pasco. I got to know David then and I asked him to come tonight in order to answer council questions from an owner's perspective. So I'll ask David to come up to the, the microphone. Also, David Rand is here. I don't know if he wants to speak. He, he actually owns the license. The only license in Sunnyside. So he is also here in case council has any questions. So a couple of things, as, as Derek was looking at this issue, looking at how much tax money this actually generates, does increased crime associated with the pot shop? Where can people buy marijuana in Yakima County? What are the number of marijuana licenses? Anything else that the council wanted to discuss? And ultimately, the marijuana license was actually passed in Pasco. And gosh, what are they up to? Three now, David? So four. So, so one from zero to four in just the past few years. So that's some context for you, Mayor.
All right. Thanks, sir. And Mr. Broughton.
Thank you. Yeah. So while back, month or two back, you know, this question was brought up as to whether or not, or if there was a reason why the city of Sunnyside had was continuing to prohibit the retail sale of, okay, I'm going to tell you this right off the bat. I personally don't like the phrase marijuana. The term is supposed to be cannabis. So you will hear me kind of glitch on that sometimes. Technical term for the, the plant is cannabis sativa, or there's another one. Oh, indica, I think. But anyhow. Marijuana has got a long history and if you're bored and you want to hear about it, I'll tell you. But I do have a PowerPoint presentation that's just kind of a summary of, of what was included in your packet. No, it came up with black and white. Oh, well, okay. So go ahead and go to the next slide. Our, our prohibition is located in SMC 1704055. It's follows right after the list of all the definition of terms in our zoning code. And it states that the sale and, and product or the sale of retail cannabis, retail marijuana is not permitted in the city of Sunnyside, nor is the processing, production of marijuana. So production is the growing. The state created three kind of lanes for folks to go into when they legalize, or this became legal in state. Production is the growing of the actual plant. Processing is where you take the raw plant and you turn it into whatever is being sold at the retail stores. So this could be the tinctures, this could be the lotions, the creating the, the actual flower. The actual plant itself in set weights, packaging that, branding it and providing it to the retail stores. The retail stores, of course, are selling it. Now, you can have a license to produce and process, but if you do, you can't do retail. If you're in retail, you cannot have any legal connection to the production processing side of things. So that's just kind of a summary. Now, the state's been tweaking and playing with this regulation over, over time. So I'm glad that there are some folks that are currently in the system right now dealing with it because there may be some nuance or change that I'm not necessarily aware of at this moment. But anyways, basically, how did medical cannabis become today's retail marijuana? Well, that's, it was a medical marijuana has been legal in Washington since the 90s. And when that when that happened, there was a basically, there wasn't a lot of meat to the legislation, just said it can happen. You have to have a, have to have a prescription. Over the course of time, this morphed, shall we say. People started, so each person with a medical cannabis card was licensed to grow and or possess a specific amount of product or number of plants at any one time. Eventually cooperatives formed that began selling, trading and growing plants for, for others with medical cannabis licenses, but who were unable to do, do so. They couldn't do it themselves due to inclination, lack of knowledge or disability. And then eventually the state began requiring them to pay taxes on their activities. Now, this is where things start getting the transition between an activity that's going on effectively a gray market where it's not technically legal to do what they're doing, the way they were doing it, because you weren't allowed to transfer it. So they would come up with clever methods to do so. And anyways, by 2010, these things are pretty prolific in the state. I mean, you would have, and they're completely unregulated for the most part. Occasionally they would come in and do something, but, but they would usually have this defense of, we've got the card, we can do this. And anyways. And anyways, so there would be a, a place would pop up, and they would be growing it, processing it, and selling it, or, or exchanging it, or whatever. There were all sorts of different methodologies, and they were basically using loopholes in the legislation. The legislation didn't close it, but they were taking advantage of it. Nobody wanted to press the issue, apparently. In 2012, the state became the first state in the nation. Colorado always gets talked about, but we were the first in the nation to permit the production, growing, processing, processing, and packaging the raw marijuana into retail products and retail sales of recreational marijuana through the passive initiative 502. It's commonly referred to as I-502. And then the first retail marijuana stores opened in 2014. So it was an interesting process, watching how the state developed that, how they implemented and transitioned from a prohibition to a licensed product. And effectively, they used just about the exact same process they utilized in, after the prohibition of alcohol, and did, and they brought back alcohol into the state. Also, which they required a little bit, they have security systems in these facilities that are prescribed by the liquor cannabis board. So you don't get to go out and pick your system. You have to use a specific system that they utilize because they have access to your facility every, pretty much every square inch. At least, okay, at least every square foot, except for in the restrooms and probably changing rooms. And this is to ensure that they can, they can trace. They have trace, they know where every product is coming from, from seed to the sale. It's all tracked, they have, it's, it's a rather fascinating system. But they also watch these cameras whenever they want, 24/7, 365. They have, any of the people that work in that department in, in LCB can pick a store, flip on the switch, and watch what's going on. And there's no indication in the facility that I'm aware of that they know. So that's part of how they are policing it. You never know when the state's watching. And, and this is to keep, you know, this helps with the, the operations as well as keeping track and making sure that there's no spillage or leakage out of the system, so they know where all of it is at all the same time. So, next slide, please. So one of the questions is often, houses affect us financially, what type of revenue? Well, initially, the cities did not receive any of the excise taxes. They only received sales, you know, their standard retail sales tax that they would get on any retail sale. In 2015, they began, the state began providing a portion of the marijuana retail excise tax, which is a 37% charge that's charged on all retail marijuana sales. It's also, I don't know if it's this amount, but, but it also is the processing and production, also each of those guys sell it, pay an excise tax. And from the records I was coming up with, at the time, the, the state, basically 10 million to the counties, 10 million to cities, not to exceed 20 million each year. So this formula moves or changes, or is done each year. There's some more caveats into how that's just cited. They're distributed only to those jurisdictions that have not prohibited the sale of marijuana within their jurisdictional boundaries. And it's also based on the total dollars generated within the jurisdiction, total population, and number of retail stores within the jurisdiction, as well as, like I said, some other variables that they use. Next, please. So some examples. Well, the city of Spokane received $450,000 roughly every year. It fluctuates $10,000 to $15,000, but they also have 17 stores in a population of over 300,000. Prosser was receiving about $35,000 annually up until 2019, when a new store opened halfway between Grandview and Prosser. And their revenue as of '21, which is the latest year I had numbers on, was down to $15,000, but most likely that because this, the new store located in the county. See, now that revenue or that excise is going to the county, Benton County. Yeah, proximity to other location, quality of service, products available, price, and local population demographics will all affect how successful the store is going to be, which directly correlates with the amount of revenue a city would receive. Based on comparable cities in the lower valley, likely excise tax revenue from a retail marijuana store located could be into $3,000 to $10,000. But again, it could be more if, if, if it was permitted. Then there, you know, it depends on the quality of the store, what they're doing, all sorts of different dynamics. So, big question, as always, do real, retail marijuana stores impact? And then what's their impact on crime in a community? Next slide, please. Well, the majority of the studies indicate that opening retail marijuana stores does not increase crime within the community. There are some studies that show a small uptick in low-level property crime, at least in Colorado. There are others that show a slight decrease. Some studies have shown that it, there is an increase in first-time users, but there does not seem to be a correlation between increased chronic use. There are even some studies that show home values increase due to the proximity of a retail, which that was a completely new one for me. I hadn't heard that. But the reality is, is this. Cannabis or marijuana retail use as a legal activity in states is only about 10 years old. 11 technically, I guess. That's not a lot of data. As you saw from Chief Lehman's report, these, these, the fluctuations in crime occur over long arcs before you can, year-to-year comparisons, it's very hard to do an analysis of. But pretty consistently, it does not seem to. But in close proximity, there are studies that show there's a uptick in low-level property crime. So that's things like easy opportunistic theft, those types of things. At least, that's my understanding for what they were talking about. So, yeah, unfortunately, this, I think in 10 years, we'll start having a good idea of what it really, because you'll have 20 years of data to be able to look at, and you'll have 24 states, because that's how many states now have legalized it for recreational use. And each state has their own process and programs. So next steps. So if we decide to maintain, there's nothing else, we're done. And we just, and there's no further action needed. If, if we do decide that it would like to proceed with repealing or amending this prohibition, we need to figure out a few other things. One, are we talking about just retail? Or do we want to look at allowing for the production and processing facilities? Production processing facilities provide some jobs. They also provide increased property values, but they do not generate, that I'm aware of, unless something's changed recently, any revenue like the retail stores do for the local jurisdiction. It's because they're private, they're operating on a wholesale scale. And then, you know, if so, where and how we would want those located? You know, only in specific zones? For example, in, in, in Airway Heights, yeah, what we did was, we prohibited the fronting on Highway 2. But, you know, those types of things. Or other jurisdictions, I've seen they put them only in a specific zone. Industrial only, or commercial, or whatever. So those are some of the things we're going to want to look at. And then, you know, if you're looking at production, or at least production, indoor/outdoor, you know. These facilities can have an odor. And Sunnyside has an odor, so I, you know, some, some say it's better, some say it's worse. Again, it's, it's a matter of taste on that one. I would never get in an argument with somebody as to whether or not this stuff smells or not, because that's purely personal. It can smell like a skunk. Now, that said, it generally doesn't do it except for towards the end, when it's what they call it, the flowering stage, so. I was the person that wrote all the regulations for the city of Airway Heights with regard to cannabis or marijuana. And then generally, the communities around Airway Heights adopted their stuff a year and a half to two years later using our stuff. So I am versed on how to write the regulations for this, however the council would like to proceed. Of course, if we do nothing, then I don't have to do anything. So I'm happy to answer questions. I do have a pretty significant understanding of a lot of this stuff. And again, we have people that are currently in the, in the field right now or have an interest. They'll, I'm sure, be able to provide you all their, if so. If I can't answer, I will probably beg off to them, and if they can't, we'll get you the answer.
All right, thank you, sir. Council, questions or comments for Mr. Broughton? Mr. Deputy Mayor?
I guess, that off? Is, is there a reason that you didn't provide any stats on the Airway Heights since you were the one involved with their way?
I haven't been there for seven years, and, and I know. Okay, so Airway Heights is an interesting place. One, it's, it's a small community that so. And my understanding, you know, this is, is a discussion where when you look across the board, it doesn't really matter where you're looking in the state. The dynamics are pretty much the same, the equations are the same. What changes is, like, for example, in Spokane, Seattle, 1.3 million is what they make. But I don't even know how many stores they've got over there. So a lot of that has to do with it. Airway Heights was an interesting thing, and I don't know if other jurisdictions much model it. I frankly felt that it was a bit of an aberration because Airway Heights is six and a quarter square miles, has three, at least it did, had three retail stores and production processing facilities. Now, they're all indoor, the production processing facility. But that's a lot of cannabis for a community that size when you look at, when you're comparing it to other jurisdictions. There's some other ones that, that are also dense that way, but Airway Heights was somewhat unusual. And it might have been because we were the first in the county to just go with it. We didn't, we didn't resist it at all. And the entire time I was there, none, never had an incident. We had some initial incidences in Spokane area with regard to people breaking in and stealing stuff because it was cash only. However, every incident that I'm aware of that occurred there, they either caught them in the process or within hours. Because, like I said, those security systems, somebody knew real fast. But then again, this, it got hit in Pasco. They, I don't know if they ever found it. They kind of wrote it off as it was kids, which I don't think was the right response, but. But that was the first time I'd seen one get hit like that in a long time, years. But I don't know every store in the state either, so.
Other questions or comments? Ms. Ralston?
Yeah. So I'm looking at this AWC packet that lists a comparable city in terms of population to Sunnyside. I believe they're a little over 17,000. And here it lists that they have around four retail licenses. And in 2020, the retail sales were a little over a million, and their excise tax was 2.5 million. Here in your presentation, you said that it would be likely that, that Sunnyside could profit 3,000 to 10,000. This number is relatively higher.
Because it's got four stores, four licenses. See.
That's quite a big jump from 10,000 to 2 million, though.
That's not what they took in. That's what the stores generated.
The excise tax.
That's not what the city took in.
Okay.
Yeah, that might be what the state, you know, they, they take 37% of all sales at each stage in the process as well. So that's what that number is. What I'm referencing is the, the spreadsheet that shows the actual disbursements of the excise tax revenues to the various cities. That's what I'm basing my stuff off. There are too many variables involved, again, in the stores. How, how it's marketed, how it's, how it's operated, how it's ran, what connections they have, what price points they're paying for their supplies, how big it is, what's, and then you also have the surrounding jurisdictions as competition as well. So the farther a store is from another store, they're, they have more of a captured audience. As you start bringing in stores, I'll tell you, you know, the two stores that were in the tri-cities before Pasco legalized it were probably not very happy that Pasco legalized it because they had the market cornered. They had one store in Finley, one store in, and that's the way, you know, that's, that, that's the nature of that. But as far as the, the statistics, I'm going off the retail, real estate, or the excise tax refund data, not. Because what the AWC presentation was about is trying to get the legislature to give us more money. That's what the primary target there. So they're trying to point out the amounts of revenue that the state's taking in compared to what they're doling out to the cities that are taking, that are, have the stores, so.
If there's, so, once, once we're done with questions, I would actually love to hear from the store owner himself.
Well, the city manager would like to bring him up. Mr. City Manager?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. And David Morgan, if you wouldn't mind stepping up. And, and just one thing before David starts talking. I think what we have to remember is, so the marijuana excise tax is distributed on a proportional share. So essentially, so cities get 6% of the total revenue. So yes, these stores generate a tremendous amount of money, but, you know, this goes into a big pot that goes to the state first. So we don't get the, it's, it's not like at Buy Mart or Walmart where we get these sales tax. So I was looking at some of the percentages. So 52% of all that money goes into the general fund at the state. 10% goes to healthcare programs. The 6% goes to cities and counties. The 6% commissioner is then divided in the county amongst all the cities within that particular county. So then 5% goes to public education, youth prevention awareness campaigns. Then 1% goes to research at UW and WSU, and some goes to drug prevention programs. So this massive amount of money is divided up in all these different segments. So that's why when you see these minuscule amounts, you go, what in the world? You know, Prosser got only 30 grand when the store probably generated 3 million. So it, it, it doesn't compute, but, so a great segue to David because he, you know, he understands the process. Because, you know, everybody thinks, well, it's just going to be a tax machine for the city, and it winds up not quite being that, although, you know, it keeps people in town. So David, thank you.
Thanks, Fred, sir.
So we're, we're going to just make you make an opening salvo and, yeah, kind of tell us, you know, obviously, name, title, the stores that you have in Spokane and Pasco, and, you know, some of the challenges you faced, and, you know, ultimately, where we are right now in the marijuana business.
Yeah, yeah, okay. David Morgan, I own Lucky Leaf. We opened our first store in Spokane in 2016, and then ended up opening two more stores over in Pasco after they changed the ordinance to allow for it back in November of '23 was our first one, and then just, well, let's see, about three months ago, our, our second store in Pasco. But yeah, we have about 20 employees at each, at each location. We're open seven days a week, 8:00 AM to midnight. But really, you, like, we, we pretty much have the same, the same kind of customer base as you did see at a grocery store. So it doesn't, it's not like we got, get a lot of riffraff. It's, it's, it's pretty much the same as, as any other store. Let's see, I, I, you know, it would be nice if the cities do get more tax, but they, they do. These, these businesses do provide jobs, and it does keep, keep people in your city here spending money locally. So that's, that's a good thing. Instead of driving off to, you know, Prosser and then, you know, hitting the, hitting the restaurant out there, doing their other shopping while they're there. So it's good to keep those people in town. And then the jobs are a big thing, you know, this, it's good to have more jobs available in your city. But yeah, we haven't had any, any real issues with crime. People are pretty mellow for the most part in the store. I haven't really, every once in a while, we'll get a disgruntled customer, but that's pretty much the same with any retail business. But the majority of everyone that come in and out of the store are really happy and well mannered. So that's, it's been an interesting experience. I mean, it's. I, I, yeah, it's it's been, it's been fun. So.
Council questions or comments for Mr. Morgan? Tripoli?
Do you have any trouble with kids trying to buy it?
Every, every once in a blue moon, we'll have, we'll catch a fake ID or something. Yeah, we we make sure to scan all the IDs before we make a sale. And then the liquor and cannabis board come in and they'll do like undercover stings to make sure that all the stores are in compliance and that people are checking IDs. So it's, it doesn't happen often, but there there sometimes there's somebody that, you know, underage that tries to sneak in and buy something.
Alcohol?
We we do a pretty good job checking IDs and catching those guys.
Okay, okay, that's it.
Okay, Mr. Deputy Mayor?
If if the liquor and board catches you selling to minors, what's the consequences?
It's it's very serious. So the first, the first offense is around a $5,000 fine. The second offense is up to like a $15,000 fine and they can shut us down for like up to a month. And then the third offense, they they can actually pull the license and you'll be out of business after that. So that's, that's one of, that is like one of the main, the main, our main concern or, you know, we don't, first of all, we don't want it getting to the youth. Second of all, we don't want our businesses getting closed down. So we we keep a very close eye on on IDs.
So you train your staff to keep an eye out for that and then and make sure that they're not selling or letting the minors inside the stores?
Correct, yes, yeah, very important.
Other questions or comments?
Yeah, go ahead.
Can you repeat shops do you own?
Two in Pasco and one in Spokane.
Okay. Go go ahead.
You said the crime, it hasn't been an issue with your stores. Have you ever been robbed?
So ye- yes, we have. Once, I've been in Spokane was, it'll be nine years on the 21st of this month. We've had one break in in Spokane. They smashed the glass in the front and just stole minimal amount of product. So, yeah, we have the, we have our glass reinforced over here in Pasco. Because we have big windows on the front, so we have some, some kind of like crossbars that we open up in at night to keep people, prevent people from breaking in the windows. So.
And is it mandatory for you guys to have security?
So the, yeah, there's, so the camera system's mandatory. So we have to keep a 45, a minimum of a 45 day continuous feed of video. So and then there every, every square inch of the store has to, there's, you can't have any blind spots in the store. But you won't pass the inspection if you have any blind spots. So the LCB comes in and makes sure that the the cameras can see every, every square inch of the store. And then, yeah, 45 days continuous feed of video on, 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 onsite. So if the LCB has any complaints or if they just need to come in and check something, then they you'd have to be able to pull up the the video for them to review. And same with law enforcement as well. We will get, we'll get local police, like if there's a crime that happens in the area, they'll come over to the to the business and ask of, ask us for for the video and we'll supply them with that.
But you do have somebody at the door asking for ID at all times?
We've, so actually, we just, we check it right. When they come up to the counter, we check. Some businesses do do the ID at the door. It's, it just kind of depends on the business in the area you're in. But. It's, I don't know, I don't know. I don't, I don't think, you know, it's usually if we see somebody young, we'll say, hey, get your ID, you know. So but it's just, yeah, we actually don't have somebody at the door, but yeah.
It's checked before they leave?
It's checked right before they even are shown any product. So when, once they get up to the counter, we we check it right away. And, yeah, so.
What what about, I guess, you say, if you see any kids, young kids, you you ID them. But what if some, some reason a kid, you know, sneaks in or whatever? Is there any product that they can reach and grab and I guess take off?
No, not at all, no. All the product is out of the reach of the general public. So only the employees are are able to access the, it's out of the reach, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments?
I have a question for Derek.
Go ahead.
Can can the city limit how many licenses we can have for stores?
It gets, generally no that I'm aware of because you start getting into, but the the issue is more a matter of, I don't. Are they still utilizing the set number that moved around the state? So they're not, it's not like if I wanted to go get a license today, I can apply to the state and go, hey, can I get a license? It's, it's still, they still have that. It was the lottery and what's being traded and sold are the existing floating licenses that haven't been utilized, correct?
That is correct, yeah, yeah. I don't know how many were allotted for Sunnyside. Pasco was allotted for. So this, it depends on the the size of the.
That's, that's what I was, so we, one, maybe two, I would have to look and I apologize. I didn't even think about that. I had assumed our license were gone by this point and you being utilized by somebody. But the state allocates how many each jurisdiction can have. It gets kind of weird with the county because the counties count and the cities counts. The cities count, they can be interchanged. So like in Spokane, originally they had, I want to say 17 and 17, but I could be wrong on that. But it was the county had an amount and then the the city had an amount. And then most of them ended up locating in the city. And I'm guessing because of infrastructure and stuff like that.
Mr. Rand, if you'd approach the microphone and.
David Rand, Sunnyside, Washington, as you all know. In the city of Sunnyside, we're allowed one license. I spoke with my liquor control board agent this morning and he says, Sunnyside gets one. The only other way that Sunnyside will ever be able to get one is if they do an equity license that they came out with. And I think there's what 17 that they came out with for the state. And there's still a few that's available to apply. There is a gentleman that has approached me, tried to buy my license. And he said, if I didn't sell my license, he was going to try to get one of these equity licenses. And he thought that he would be able to force it in Sunnyside. Liquor Control Board says that there's one license and one license only. I've had my license for 10 years. I was like the 17th store licensed. As we all know, the rest is history. I'm not going to get into that. Sunnyside can only have one. I wasn't allowed to move it. I can't move it to Prosser. I can't move it to Yakima. I can't move to Union Gap. I can't move it to Spokane. Because believe me, I've tried. And they told me no. So every year we just pay our dues. City of Sunnyside, I know that some of the figures you gave you are a little bit odd because they're outdated. The the stores right now get $1 for every $31 that is in sales. So every $31, so we project from from the forensic accountant that we did seven years ago, the last time Mike came in here and talked, predicted then our store would do 600,000 a month. We only say that if our store does the same as Prosser or the bake shop that's right outside of Prosser in the county or even the bake shop in Union Gap or Slow Burn. If you look at dollar statistics, they're about $350,000 a month. You can go right on the liquor control board and pull up every single store and it will tell you an order from the highest sales store to the lowest sales store. Up until David opened up in November 23?
Yep.
Green to Go in Finley was the highest revenue store in the state of up to 1.5 million a month in sales. Then the desert one opened up and that only knocked off about 300,000 a month off of Steven and Jesse Lee's store. It's not only about the excise tax money that we're going to get. We also pay sales tax on that money. So we pay it, there's excise tax of 37%. There's also a sales tax of our standard sales tax. So on top of the excise money, the city will get their standard sales tax fee from sales tax like every other business. And I do remember at one time when Popeyes came in, everybody bragged that Popeyes was going to do a million dollars. And and Julia, correct me if I'm wrong, but it was around $10,000 that that Popeyes was supposed to get that would bring into our town. And everybody was excited about $10,000. And we paid that one guy to come in and do all that consulting and told us, well, just because you get a new restaurant or another restaurant, doesn't mean we're going to get more business because we have a geographical area. Right now, our geographical area, Dean, you were here at the same time. He told us was, I think, a little past Granger, up to the Columbia River and around to Tri-Cities and back, Tibetan City and and around. So those are all the people right now that we have to make travel to other places. I'm sorry if I'm gonna get emotional. As you all know, I stopped coming to councils six and a half years ago because my wife was diagnosed with stage four Brantscaster. And Vicky's been part of watching my wife's journey. The only thing, guys, and I will bring you every medical record and let you read it. The only thing that kept her alive is a Rick Simpson oil. And this man right here and two owners at Zips Cannabis that owns five of the best cannabis stores in the state of Washington. And I do agree with you, the term marijuana is old school. It shouldn't be used. We should use it as cannabis because that's what it is. It's cannabis sativa into the plant. Our bodies work on a cannabinoid system. The marijuana plant has 132 cannabinoids. The night that I collapsed in here, I found out five days later that my wife had stage four inflammatory breast cancer. They told us plant on bear and my wife in three months because she was so built up with cancer throughout her body. And we prayed to God that he gave us an answer. And it was people like David that gave us Rick Simpson oil at cost. And today, my wife, on April 1st, we're going to celebrate five years of her being 100% cancer free. And the American Journal of Science. Excuse me. They're going to write a story about my wife's, because they told us she had 1% to live and she's still alive today. As you all know, that's the only reason I want this store opened. Well, there's two reasons. It's the kids of this town. I've stood at this podium over 10 years and talked. Everybody talked about the kids. It's about the kids. It's about the kids. All I seen in this town is that everybody gave up on the kids. And I'm not going to brag. I don't normally, but there is a scripture in the Bible that tells us that we should glorify when we help. I gave last year to this town with Rob, because Rob came to me and said, Dave, it's your town. And I know you love this town. I gave away 700 meals to get ridiculed. I was told over a forum to bring on, when new council wanted to be voted in to better our city, that I was the mafia and the drug money to help these people. I never met these people in my life until the forum. About a week before the forum, George said, hey, man, I didn't know who I'm talking about. And he came out to my shop. I love these kids in this town. And you can talk to Mike and he'll tell you, I sat in his office three weeks ago and told him how much money I've given out of my construction company and how much money I will give to this youth, to this community. For the 4H and FFA kids, 127,000 in 2024 is what Best Built Construction donated to kids. The little girl back here tonight, for, for, all I heard was that she was the wrestling champ. I seen her article on there and she wants to go to Reno. So I went back and gave her dad my number, said, call me tomorrow and I'll give you a check. Because the kids of our community is what matters. If you ever think in a cold day and that I will ever let a minor in there, that ain't going to happen. Ain't going to happen. I run the largest medical collective in the valley for 12 years, as he spoke about medical collectives. I had 2,100 patients. I buried 51 of my best friends and I'm burying one next week on Wednesday. So I'm begging you. The people that are dying of cancer and other things, read the statistics. The old people are getting drugs to smoke a little bit of cannabis. So Police Department, they ain't going to have to go argue with DWIs. As we know, liquor consumption is coming down in every state that we have legalized cannabis. But in Sunnyside, Safeway is still at 20 to 23,000 a month for liquor sales theft until they put the locked in cabinets five months ago. But they're still at about 7,000 a month of alcohol being sold. Like David said, every bit of that cannabis is behind locked walls. Nobody's going to get to it. You can't, you can't even, 90% of the stores, and believe me, I go to five stores in in Tacoma. I have to hit a different store every day to get enough Rick Simpson oil for my wife. Because they can only donate so much to me at a time. So they send me to their, all their different stores. And then when I get done those, my weekend is spent going down to David's store and getting more medicine. If you think it's cheap, it's not. It's not. To keep your wife alive, it's not, it's not cheap. But I still donate to every kid in this town that comes to me and says to me, hey, I need this or I need that. And when I ask and beg the community for help, I'm ridiculed because everybody says you're the fucking weed guy. Oh, excuse my French. You're the weed guy. How can you help somebody? Well, if you guys want proof of the help, I'll get you the kids at the Grandview Fair, Topness Fair, Spokane Fair, Puyallup Fair, Moses Lake Fair.
So, sir, I, I, and I appreciate what you have to say, but we're starting to wander from the, from the topic at hand, so.
Well, it come, it all comes down to the same thing. If you guys allow me to open the store, we will be able to benefit the community in multiple ways. One, we'll be able to get some excise tax. Two, sales tax. Three, we will employ 15 to 20 new people in town. Average wage, $20 an hour. That's just for a counterperson. Management? I know some of the managers are making in the stores 150 grand a year. We bring that to our community. It's, it's that amount of wages every week, counting the other 17 paychecks that I write. We're going to go right down to the bank in town and they're going to go to Walmart. I have nine of my employees that cast their checks at Walmart every week.
All right.
That's going to give us a whole bunch more revenue for.
Mr. Rand, we have a question for you here from the city manager.
And David, thanks for meeting with me. It was a really good conversation and and I know we laughed and cried and we did all sorts of stuff in there. And it was, I know Councilwoman Hart, Councilwoman Hart was in there too. So it was a really good conversation. And the thing I wanted to to ask you, because I mean, you've been very supportive of kids in our community. And and I certainly don't want to put you on the spot here, but one of the discussion points.
5% of my profits.
Right, was, you know, and you were pretty on the record. Will you pledge that if?
Pledge that right?
And I'm, and you know, I'm, I'm Switzerland on this issue, you know, and but I do want to, that was a conversation piece, so.
Okay, the social equity stores that they want to come into town, what they're going to do is they're going to make them give 5% to the community right off the bat. And you have to write a explanation on how you want to spend your money for the community. I'm about this far away from a social equity license in another town. And about this far, we pledged 5% to them. They sat down and predicted the sales. They predict their sales are $600,000. So take $5,000 for every 100,000 of that, that's $25,000 a month. I did also tell you one other thing, didn't I? That I'd write the check to open the pool after I was open for three months. after I was open for three months. I was going to write the check to donate it. But as I sat there, my wife sent me a message, said, don't give it to them until after we get something back in return. I don't want to be that way, but I also stepped up to write a check for thirty thousand to keep the senior center open. Because I believed a hundred percent, one hundred percent in everything in my body, that the senior citizens of this community made this community. And if we turn our backs on them, over thirty grand for a community center, I was like, wow. So I pledged. I quit giving to Rob, but I give to two other police stations what I was giving to Rob. And he's going to kick my ass for this one and I'm going to get a phone call tomorrow saying why. Well, he knows why right now. So I pledged five percent of my profits to the youths of this community. I told you that I would sponsor the first baseball club that you put together. And I said I'd and I said I'd sponsor that before I even came to this meeting.
Right.
So I am a hundred percent for this town. Julia right there can tell you that. She's done more articles about my charity to the ki- the kids in this town than anything I've ever read. I've checked through the archive archives. And right now I'm at fifty nine articles that that lady's wrote about me and my family.
You know that.
About youths, about about going to the school, taking our four H club when Sierra Vista School came into town. We planted the first tree there. We used to go to the mall and take our animals, our pigs and have a and have a a a petting zoo in the mall. We've already talked to Mike about doing that over at the community center so that we can get involvement in the 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 four H and the FFA system. My kid, my grandkids, every three weeks are in a different town doing jackpot pig shows. I was in Kalus, California Saturday for a pig auction to buy show pigs. This Wednesday I leave and I'll be in Kalus, California with seven jackpot kids that I sponsor. I pay for their pigs. I pay for their feed just so they can go because they told me my parents can't afford it. So I said, there's a pen, there's a pig, you come after school. They come seven days a week to our farm. And they train. That's what this money is going to do.
All right, and again, and again, I hate to interrupt you. I really do because I don't doubt the sincerity of what you say. Um I've, you know, you and I have spoken. I don't, I don't doubt your sincerity, but we're starting to get off track again. Uh I do appreciate your comments. I don't know, council members, do you have any questions for either Mr. Morgan or Mr. Rand?
No, thank you, Mr. Rand, for everything that you have done for the youth in this community.
It'll keep going.
Yeah.
Now, whether you whether you let me open it or not, my my and the kids will go till I can't give involvement. It just won't happen in Sunnyside because I can't support and give back to a community that my construction company doesn't make money from. So every project I do, Gig Harbor, I just got done. I went to the local FFA teacher and I said, hey, I just did a project out here in your Gig Harbor. I said, I don't have any Gig Harbor four H or FFA kids. Here's fifteen hundred dollars to put to your programs for a kid that can't afford it. Every town that I go to, Port Angeles, I did a big project out at Platypus Marine. And I went to the owner and I and he said, hey, what's all that about with your four H stuff? I explained it to him. So him and I partnered up together. We found three kids in Port Angeles to donate to.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, sir.
That's where the money is going to go. Um five percent of it's going to stick right out of that store. If it has to come directly to Sunnyside, to the city manager to put into a budget, if you add into the code to allow it, put it in the code and say that we we it's mandatory that we donate five percent of the profits.
All right. Thank thank you, sir. Really do have to draw this to a close.
Thank you, guys.
I do appreciate your comments, both of you. Uh Mr. Broughton, I appreciate the work that you put in on this. Um it sounds as if um we've got more work to do on this to take a look at it. Council, we have an audience member who would like to make some comments. It's um it means suspending the rules if there's any objection.
To this matter?
To, yes, it it will be directly on this topic, correct? Yes.
Yeah, that's fine.
No objection. Ms. Hancock, you can give you a couple of minutes. Please speak into the microphone.
Teresa Hancock, Sunnyside. I'm not here advocating one way or the other. I'm here because I spent thirty years with the Liquor and Cannabis Board. Um went through all these changes. Things might have changed. Maybe the rulemaking is different, but I what I understood when I was going through all this with the Liquor Control Board was that Sunnyside does not have the ability to tell the Liquor Control Board how many licenses they will issue. And they can do, they can make a rule change. And that's just something that I think if if this goes forward, you guys should get the clarification, know what's going on. Really understand what the Liquor Control Board's powers are compared to the city council's powers. And that's all I wanted to say.
All right, thank you. All right. So what is the will of council on this? Do we want staff to continue to work on this to bring it forward?
I say yes.
Okay. Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Is this something we could take to subcommittees like Public Safety and Economic?
I believe so, yes.
And then I guess work on it there and then, I mean, I'm I'm for it. We want to direct staff, but I do have.
I personally, my, that was one thing I didn't mention in my thing, but it was in your packet. One thing that we need to decide is how the council wants if they want to move forward, how many public hearings, things like that. Because of where it's placed in our cut, no, it says, okay, yeah, never mind. I'm sorry, I was switching with animal control. Now, any any changes will take a minimum of ninety to a hundred and twenty days. Because this is a a development code change which has to go through a process, including a sixty day review by the Department of Commerce, because anytime we amend any of our development codes, it has to go that way. Public hearing, CIPA, those types of things. So I only bring that up to say that if this is something the council desires staff to move forward, one, given that time to go forward, it's it's still ain't going to happen like that.
Okay, so that's.
I would like this to move forward. I, like I've said it before and it's been on record, um that I think we have a bigger fish to fry um in Yakima County. We have a fentanyl crisis um that's looming um and and uprising um that's directly affecting our youth. I thank you for sharing um all of the regulations um and protocols in place that um that your store abide by. Um I think it gave me a really good perspective on how things will will run and um how secure the cells uh will be, um the security around it. I mean, we even even where it may be located. I mean, we have dairies that are just not even a mile down um uh from city limits and they're actively, you know, contaminating our waters. Uh we talk about the smell. I mean, the smell of manure is in the air. So I mean, there are really, there are bigger things, uh bigger fish to fry around here. And I I really do believe that opening a marijuana store and allowing the cells of cannabis in our community you know, are are, you know, probably middle to to the bottom of 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 imminent safety and security measures in our community. Um I still think we're going to profit off of it. So I I I I approve for this to to move forward. Um if that's sending it to a committee, I support that.
All right, so we will get to work on committees and see if we can figure out which committees are the best ones to examine this from their different perspectives. And it will certainly be coming back before council. So Mr. City Manager, I think you can.
And the only thing I'd like to clarify, Mr. Mayor. Would you like us to do any community outreach forums where something we did in Pasco where we invited the public to come to City Hall and voice their opinion, either pro or con, and it gave the council an opportunity to kind of digest that and.
I think that can be part of the discussion of the subcommittees to decide, you know, how to do that, what that should look like. And um we'll give those subcommittees a chance to work on that and then we can get started on that process. So. All right. Please approach the microphone, Mr. Rand, and make your comment.
And I did just want to let the council and everybody know that David Morgan is actually going to run our store. Because of Diane's health and everything and and what's going on in our family, we ourselves can't actually run it because I have a construction business to run. So we we have been negotiating with David for over five years that if the store ever opened, that he would be the person to run it. So that is why he's here speaking tonight as well. So um he's one of the topmost integrity people I've known in my life. And I trust him that much with with one of my businesses. So he's a good, he has a good integrity. He's a good person. He's got a wonderful family. Um he's just all around good and he will bring goodness to our community as well. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, um. Mr. Brown, I want to formally welcome you to the city of Sunnyside next Monday during the regular business meeting. I think we'll probably get a larger crowd of the community. I'm glad to see you here tonight and I know you started working last week and but I want to formally introduce you to the to the city at our regular business meeting as opposed to in a study session. So um unofficially welcome. But Monday night we'll have an official welcome for you here and psych and I'm and I'm excited to have you on board. Pardon? Will there be cake? I don't know, Ms. Hart, if there will be cake. I can't, I can't speak to that.
I'll get, I'll get one.
So. And then um I want to take this moment to thank council for the excused absences over the month of February. I know you guys endured winter, you endured illnesses, you endured all sorts of stuff. Mr. Deputy Mayor, you did a fantastic job of stepping in. I know you weren't always feeling all that great. I tried on many occasions to log in and for whatever reason, whether my internet connection was too slow or whether um I think at first it was locked out from outside the country, but Jackie corrected that. But it just wouldn't let me log in. Otherwise, I was going to try to participate remotely, although I don't believe in chairing a meeting remotely, so I wasn't even going to attempt to chair. But I remember one evening I was walking around a city. It's a rather significant city. It should have had great internet service and absolutely nothing. And I just took pictures of colonial buildings. But I just want to thank you guys for the opportunity to go. I started working when I was thirteen and about that time I I started dreaming of travel as well. And over the years, those plans started solidifying a little bit. Now that my kids have moved out of the house and I've got a little bit more free time, I try to take advantage of that. I usually pick February simply because it's supposed to be a slow month in Sunnyside. And this year didn't really turn out to be the case. So but I traveled from north to south in Mexico and enjoyed a great deal of 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 that country and as is typical, the people of Mexico are absolutely phenomenal. So thank you for that permission.
Could I just?
Yes, Ms. Hart.
I just want to uh thank the uh council for giving me an uh excused absent, I think just past Monday. It's council meeting. I'm sorry I didn't get it all um done properly for the unexcused absence that you all gave me um the night my sister was taken to the emergency ward. I wasn't really I wasn't really, um what do you call it? Not all the wheels were on the ground and so I didn't, I didn't do that. I didn't get it done. But anyway, I do, you probably missed me a few more times. She's not in a great place and always it is really hard to lose somebody in your family, especially to a disease that as Mr. knows, lingers and lingers and lingers and then all at once just kicks you in the tush. And so that's where she's at right now. But I do appreciate your concern and and the many um prayers that have been sent my way. So thank you.
All right, thank you. There being no further business to come before council and with no objection, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.